Okay, in our agenda, we have a five-minute break. Do you want a break, or do you want to press forward?
Press forward.
Press forward, alright. And you feel free to just take a break. Spontaneous breaks. Alright, I'll go ahead and read the introduction. Alright, alright. At this time, I'd like to introduce Andrea White, Partner with White &amp; Story Attorneys at Law. Andrea graduated from Clemson University and the University of South Carolina School of Law. She has practiced education law for more than 32 years and represents school districts all around the state of South Carolina. She is a frequent speaker on various school law topics, including FOIA and other state and federal laws. Andrea has assisted many school boards and school administrators in dealing with complex legal matters, including board operations and board superintendent relations. After having lived in Columbia for more than 35 years, Andrea and her husband, along with their six fur babies, recently located to the Santee River, where they have plans to restore the 65-foot-long side-wheel paddleboat her husband built in the 1980s. Joining Andrea this evening is Molly Flynn, also an attorney with White &amp; Story. A native of Columbia, Molly is also a former assistant solicitor with the Fifth Circuit Solicitors Office. They will be speaking on working together effectively, the role of the board and the role of the superintendent under law, policy, and contract.
Thank you all for having us. And Molly's going to speak first. And I think crazy, I meant to bring copies. But she's on to make copies of our presentation so that you can keep notes on there. So Molly, if you want to go ahead and get started, keep your hands down and get to this microphone. I'm very loud. As Ms. Green said, I'm a former prosecutor, so I am very used to just also walking away from the microphone. So reel me back in if you need me, if you need to. Is everybody okay if I take my mask off over here to hear me a little bit better? Okay, perfect. So, we are going to talk to y'all about a lot tonight, but I'm going to start off with what are your duties as the board and what are the superintendent's duties? And how do those coincide? And then, how your policies kind of reflect that? And so, at any time, y'all feel free to interrupt me, ask me a question. If I don't know the answer, I can guarantee you Andrea knows it. So, y'all feel free to ask questions at any time, okay? Some of this you probably already know. I think we skipped ahead a little bit, sorry. Alright, so, power is vested in you all through state law. It is this code section. You can look it up on the internet. You can Google it. You can go to sccourts.org or scstatehouse.gov and find any of these laws and read them. But essentially, what are your general duties and powers as board members? So, one of them that is still in there, which I find just very interesting, is that you are to provide schoolhouses. Of course, we don't call them that anymore, but that is still in the law. You're to employ and discharge teachers, to promulgate rules and regulations, call meetings of electors for consultation, control school property. You all know that that doesn't just include this building or one school. It includes any athletic fields, anything like that that the district may own. Visit schools, control educational interests of the district, charge matriculation and incidental fees. Y'all know about those. Transfer and assign pupils, prescribe conditions and charges for attendance, provide school-age childcare program or facilities therefor, and then establish this annual calendar. So what in general are your roles as a trustee versus the superintendent's roles? So first and foremost, you all are the ones that set the vision and goals for the district. And I think Ms. Green said it very quickly earlier. Will you say it for us again? What is our vision, our mission?
Empower each child to design the future.
There you go. So, you guys set that. I think that's a great one. I don't think you need to change it. Develop and implement policies. So, as a matter of practice, how do you all actually implement policies? Does the superintendent propose those to you all? And then you vote on them? Do you have two readings? Who knows what your policy says about that?
So, yeah, the superintendent recommends those to us. And then, we have two readings and vote on them.
Okay. Did you know that there's also a couple of other ways you can implement policy pursuant to your board policies? So, in an emergency situation, you can implement a policy. The superintendent has the authority vested in him by your board. To, in a state of an emergency, we've been there for the last year, right? Can implement a policy. You all have the opportunity to review it and say, nah, we don't like this, or we're good with this. And then you also have the ability to say, okay, it's an emergency situation and we can put an expiration date on it, if that makes sense. Now, I will say, after looking at some of your policies, some of them have not been revised since 1985. So, you guys may want to look at those again and see, hey, do we want to maybe change the way that we do these policies? I would not suggest that you take the ability of the superintendent in an emergency situation away, but you may want to look at these and decide, do we want to change anything? Because there's a couple of policies in here. For example, let's see. You have policy drafting, policy BDB. They may be initiated in writing by any board member. This is a proposal for a new policy. Or by any individual or group of citizens, students, or employees. They will then be referred to the superintendent for a detailed study prior to board discussion of the proposal. Now, this was instated in May of 1985. So you guys may want to look at that. But just, so you know, there's another way that policy can be brought to you. In your policy BDC, you note that policies may be adopted or changed at any regular meeting of the board by a majority vote, provided the board has at least 30 days prior written notice of the proposed policy. This is another one that hasn't been revised since 1985. But as you stated, we have to go through two readings, right? So these policies are maybe in conflict with each other a little bit. So I just encourage y'all that at some point, take a look at these and see, are they in conflict? Do they work together? Or is there something that maybe we don't? Maybe that policy's not necessary because we have this other policy adoption, right? We have the way that it gets on the agenda. Those policies have been revised more recently than 1985. But you might want to think about looking at those because you have several policies that address how to instate board policy, for example.
What would you say when working with other districts, best practices around policies?
So what we see typically and what we recommend is the two-reading policy that you all do also have in place. But we also do recommend that in an emergency situation, the superintendent be able to instill a policy or an administrative rule. But also, and you do all have this policy as well, you have the ability to suspend any policy in an emergency situation. But as a matter of practice and just trends that we see, the two-reading and then formal adoption, should you go forward, is the typical what we see. Andrea, do you disagree with that at all?
Well, I was going to say, you know, taking a note of stuff, administrative rules, which generally accompany a policy and have the specific information in there. Your policy is more of a general framework. And then the administrative rule goes into more detail that the superintendent has the authority to enact an administrative rule. And then that's part of the board as information. Is that what y'all do here? Where does the board actually vote to approve administrative rules?
We vote to approve administrative rules.
Which is fine. You know, in some districts, the board allows the superintendent to enact them and then just present them to the board for information. But this policy about, you know, members, citizens and so forth, being able to bring policies to the board, you know, to have a look at, that's very unusual. You know, I've not seen anything like that in other districts.
What's the thinking behind two readings on a policy? So, for example, policy is brought to us, first reading. This would be the first time we have seen it. And hopefully, we've had time to review it before it's presented to us, but maybe not. And so, in reviewing it at the board meeting, say, first time you're hearing it, you could theoretically get seven points of feedback from our board that is then taken back to whoever's developing that policy. And then it has to be filtered down to new policy. And then at the second reading, it's now new to us again and we have to vote on it. And so, what's the thinking behind two?
Well, I think, can y'all hear me? Wait, is it on? Okay. I think that the thinking behind two readings is that the first time that it would come to you would be as a proposal, okay? And sometimes it's a new policy and a lot of times, it's a revised policy, right? And so, you would hear about it and the reason behind the policy and if there were changes, why the changes are being made. Then, as you note, everybody would have the opportunity to speak to it. You would also have the opportunity to, if it's appropriate, have legal counsel review it or have different staff members review it, you know, based on what area that it's in. And then for it to come in its final form back to the board for approval. So I think the whole idea with the first reading is to give the administration, you know, some sort of guidance on, is this a policy that the board wishes to adopt? Or is this a policy that we need to revise? Now, there's nothing that requires, I mean, you require the two readings by policy, by your policy, but that's not a legal requirement. That can be changed within your policy. But I think that's the reasoning behind it, is to make sure that once it's adopted by that second reading, that it is a legal, logistically sound policy where people have had, including the board members, but also administrators, input into it.
But I think where he's going is, should it be three readings, four readings? So in my mind, after the second reading, if we didn't have congruent opinions, we would table it for more work and it comes back.
Yeah, you could always do that.
You could always table it. You could always push it more.
Well, and I think it also gets into, you know, how soon ahead of the meeting do you get copies of it, right? So you really have the opportunity to sit down and review it and call the superintendent if you have questions about it. So making sure that you get things in adequate time to be able to study and ask questions so that when you get to the meeting for the first reading, you've got some questions to ask because you've had an opportunity. Or maybe you've had your questions answered because you called the superintendent about it. But, yeah, you can certainly table it if that becomes, and that happens on occasion.
Yeah, I mean, you never really want to belabor, you never want to, you know, beat the dying horse, if you will, by re-reading and re-reading. But I think we all have, we probably all have our own little focus groups that we kind of reach out to. You know, once it's kind of made open, you know, to the public, I think we all have our kind of straw poll, you know, like, what do you think about this? And so, you get more information as you sort of digest that. For us, we're typically getting the policy, say, on Friday afternoon before the Tuesday meeting. And quite frankly, some weekends, you know, it's a busy weekend, you know, and you may not have the time to dedicate to it. And so, I think for, and obviously, that limits your ability to reach out to someone, nor do you want to reach out to someone because it hasn't been made public yet. And so, you know, as you're trying to think your way through this process, you're getting more feedback in that 30-day window between readings one and reading two. You're digesting more stuff. You're getting more information. And then you come to the second reading and then you've got to vote to finalize it. And it feels like, well, wait a minute, you know? And of course, we can table it, you know, which we have before. But it just feels like, it feels like it almost needs to be three. You know, but again, I'm not one for belaboring something. But, you know, in the way the current system is set up, that seems to be...
Well, the other thing you could do is, you could, when it's first presented to the board, just have it as an item for information for the board and not even the first reading.
Well, and recently, the most recent set of policies that we were provided, we were given them as information in December. And we had our first reading in January. And that's a new change. And I think you're right, because there are some policies that the recommended language, we're like, okay, you know, we don't really have any...
Yeah, sometimes it's a legal requirement, right? That you have to enact a policy that says a certain thing.
Right. But I, you know, I've kind of fallen where you are sometimes that, and also that in-between the first and second reading, if we're all sending stuff, it would be nice to marinate on the composite of the suggested changes for another period of time before we... And it may just be like on an ad hoc basis where we decide to table it. Because, I mean, most of our policies would not need to be carried over for a third meeting.
Right.
But we do have some that...
And if this is going to be something very detailed or potentially controversial, I like the idea of presenting it first as information, right? And then that gives everybody the opportunity to ask questions and so forth. And then before you have first reading, for each of you to be able to talk with, like you said, your focus group, your constituents, the people that you go to. So then when you come to first reading, you know, at that point in time, you may want to make an amendment, you know, move to make an amendment to the policy based on what you thought about. So I think with policies, and you could even have your policy adoption policy say that, that, you know, in some cases, the policy will first be presented as information before there are two readings on it. I think that would be a good way to deal with it. So you don't have to do that all the time, but it gives you the discretion to do that when it's a policy that is going to require a lot of thought and deliberation.
Sorry, it's the West in me that thinks through the whole process.
Yeah, listen, I'm a West too.
Me too. So I was going to say, in the interest of full transparency, the administrative rule to your policy BDD does say that unless it's highly unusual circumstances, you should not, I'm paraphrasing, but you shouldn't table discussion on a policy for more than 60 days. So, that's unlikely to happen, but it could. Look what happened last year and what we're still going through, right? It's certainly possible that y'all could have gotten through one reading of a policy and, whoopsie, we can't even get back to that because we've got to deal with school closures, right? That's a highly unusual circumstance that would qualify here. But if you do want to talk about, maybe let's do, for information only first. Y'all think about that. And look, dig into these policies and we're happy to help with that as well.
And that V section, that's the section that prescribes all of your duties and responsibilities, the duties and responsibilities of board officers and what the superintendent's role is versus what board trustee's role is. And I have found over the years that that is a section of the policy manual that is not updated nearly as often as your J section, which is students, and then the G section, which is personnel. That's a trend across the state. So I think it's worth taking a look at that.
But that's not to say that y'all don't have some great stuff in here too, because you do have, your policy BDD is very detailed about your board superintendent relationship and covers pretty much everything I'm going to go over. So, you guys got that. If you need to look there. And it's actually broken down exactly like this. So Andrea had some foresight, or no, premonition, maybe that was the word I was looking for. So, you also are to hold the superintendent accountable, okay? So that doesn't mean, you know, we're going to chain him to the chair and, you know, hold him accountable that way, right? We're going to hold him accountable for the things he says he's going to do and the actions he says he's going to take, right? What he tells the public, that's y'all's job. And then you vote on recommendations from the superintendent. So of course, those can be anything from, I'm recommending a policy, or I'm recommending a hiring or termination, or maybe a transfer. And you serve as a quasi-judicial body. Do y'all know what that means? What?
So we're an appellate body for employee decisions that's above the superintendent that are appealed through him or her. And then the same for student matters.
Right, right, exactly. So you serve as their sort of due process, right? You guys get to hear everything again? Yes, sir.
And then after us, it goes to an administrative law court judge? What happens after us?
Well, that depends.
Well, and I can speak to that. So, let's say it's an employee matter, right? And the superintendent has recommended that a certified employee of the district be terminated or non-renewed, right? Y'all are the body, and let me ask this question. The law was amended, the Teacher Employment and Dismissal Act, several years ago. And it now allows a school board of trustees to appoint someone to act as a hearing officer on behalf of the board. Have y'all done that? And if you do that, it has to be done by policy, okay? So you probably have in your policy the way that it used to be prior to that, you know, the legislature allowing that. So what that means is that the teacher would have a full evidentiary hearing, a dismissal hearing. Some of y'all may have been through one of those. And from there, if the board then upholds the administrator's recommendation, the employee can appeal to circuit court. So it goes to a circuit court judge. The circuit court judge rules on the record. He doesn't conduct a de novo hearing where there's evidence heard. And from there, it can go to the South Carolina Court of Appeals. And then the employee can petition the South Carolina Supreme Court for a writ of certiorari. And the Supreme Court has the right, whether or not, to hear a matter like that. So that's the direction in which it goes. So the administrative law courts really don't get involved, interestingly, in matters of school board action. You would think that they do, but it's the circuit court.
If that's employees, what about student expulsions and student action?
Same thing.
It's appealed through the circuit court?
It would go straight into circuit court and then court of appeals and then a petition to the Supreme Court.
I was going to ask about students if he didn't, so, read my mind.
Now you know the answer.
Read my mind. And then the superintendent, right? You're kind of the CEO. You're the top executive, if you will, in this organization. But you ultimately answer to the board, right? So they're sort of, they are your board of directors, right? But you manage the day-to-day operations in the district. You're the one that's in the trenches, if you will. You know, from the top down, managing everything. And the power is vested in you to make hiring decisions, to make, you know, supervisory decisions and then to manage your staff. How many people do you manage on a day-to-day basis, Dr. Little?
Day-to-day? Let's see, I probably have, let's see, five, seven, and 32 principals, so 39, 40, probably day-to-day folks. And then, you know, beyond that.
So a lot, yeah. Do you delegate any of that? Any supervisory sort of things? You have someone, for example, in HR that you...
Certainly, yeah, well, yeah. So a lot of HR stuff goes to, you know, our human resource officer, those types of things. But those, I probably have more direct reports than I should have, but I just can't seem to undirect report them.
Well, that is good in a way. That means I think people trust you, probably.
Do you mind going back one?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I would add something. So again, I think the board obviously holds the superintendent accountable, but also supports the superintendent. Because again, the superintendent is the board's boots on the ground executing against the strategic plan. And likewise, I think the superintendent has to support his or her board member. So again, I think there's a mutual lean-in by both parties of respect because, again, the board can't get anything done without superintendent, so...
Absolutely. I would totally agree with that.
And the board's only power is when you meet like this, right? You know, outside of a meeting like this, you have no response, you know, no authority to act on behalf of the school district, on behalf of the board. So yes, I think that's the whole idea, is for there to be a harmonious working relationship between the board and the superintendent and of course, between board members as well for the, you know, good of the district.
And we've been blessed here in Lexington with excellent superintendents. But the process of finding a superintendent opened my eyes to the other options in the market. So, we've been blessed here.
Yes, you have.
Well, having worked in the school system for many, many years, Mayor Walker one time and I were having a conversation about, you know, putting our trust in somebody and use that trust this person to do that. Finally said, we're just a bunch of trusting trolls. But we are, as a school district. I mean, the word trustee itself, we have to respect and trust. And I think it's very important that we keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yeah, that mutual respect, that mutual trust. Because you're right, he is the one with the boots on the ground. So you do have to have that trust that he's going to do what you've entrusted him to do. And the same on the reverse, right? This is certainly not an all-encompassing list, so we're going to hit the high points. So you also, we've gone, we've pretty much gone over this, but you have this legislative role in that you do make policy, right? You review it, you adopt it. You may not write it, but you are the ones that are enacting that policy. We've already talked about your quasi-judicial role, nailed that. Operational action. So you conduct meetings, like you are today. And then, of course, more traditional meetings. And in those meetings, you have to adhere to state laws, DOE regulations, and then directives as well, right? And then, of course, we'll, I know Andrea's going to talk about her favorite topic, FOIA. And I love FOIA as well, soon. So you also have to comply with federal laws, right? And then, you guys have an enormous responsibility when it comes to the budget, when it comes to the financial structure of this district, right? You control the entire budget. You adopt that budget, amend it as necessary. And that's a big thing in general. But especially this last year, I know everyone is kind of facing, what are we going to do for this next upcoming school year? So, you know, not that you guys don't know that that's a tremendous responsibility, but it is. And I think a lot of people don't know that that is one of your huge responsibilities, is to develop and adopt and implement the budget for your district. And all of the powers of the board lie in you as a group, not as individuals. That's really important. You can't take action as just you. You have to take action as a whole. So, I think the exercise that y'all just went through is really great to see. Everyone is represented here with different personalities, different character traits, different strengths and weaknesses to help you take that action as a group. So, what are your responsibilities at board meetings? So again, you also, of course, have a policy addressing this. But all duties imposed on you are executed at a lawfully called meeting. Y'all have got that down. Though, you establish through policy your guidelines for meetings. Y'all have done that as well. And then the board officers, in consultation with the superintendent, develop the meeting agenda. Is that how y'all normally operate?
Yes, so, well, I'll put it this way, up until November, I'm not sure how it's done now. But in the past, our board officers and our superintendent developed the meeting agenda. So I have a question about the agenda. There is no process for board members outside of the officers to get something on the agenda. How is that usually handled? Because, for instance, I went to a school board association conference. They gave us a model policy. I wanted to see that implemented in the district. But I could never get that put on the agenda because I couldn't get it past the officers and onto the agenda.
So that is all about communication, right? How can we communicate better? So, if you want something, how did you try to do it? Did you send an email? Did you, I don't, you don't need to call anybody out or anything like that, but...
Well, I followed policy. So I went on there, you know, and it said, it told you exactly how that you get something put on the agenda. I went through that. I think there might have been a phone call after an email. There was a meeting and I was told that the officers represent the board and they make decisions for the board and they have the final say. And it wasn't going on the agenda.
Let me make a suggestion here because this is something that, you know, I was going to talk about a little bit anyway. Because that is, I hear that all the time, okay? In different districts, about how do I get something on the agenda? And especially in a district, and I'm not saying that y'all are this district or you're this board, but where there are factions on the board, that becomes, that can become an issue, right? About how do we get things on the agenda? So what, and I also see, and every trustee should have the opportunity to get things on the agenda. On the flip side of that, is if you've got seven different people who all want something on the agenda, right? Because it's their baby and they want this to be discussed on the agenda, meetings would go on for hours and hours. So what I have recommended to a lot of boards is that you have something on your agenda, like at the end of a meeting agenda, that says, request for items to be placed on a future agenda, okay? So then someone can make a motion, hey, I'd like to place on the agenda a discussion related to adoption of a policy dealing with something, okay? Or rezoning, whatever it is. And then that policy, I mean, that motion, if it gets a second, then it's up for discussion. And then if it passes, right? If a majority of the board feels like that's something that needs to be on the agenda, then it gets placed on the agenda. And to me, that's a very workable way of if the majority of you wish to discuss something, then it gets on, it gets on the agenda. But it doesn't get into a situation where seven people want seven different things on the agenda. And maybe you're the only person who cares about that thing. Nobody else really cares about that thing, right? Which is not to say, if you brought it up at one meeting and it doesn't pass, could you bring it up again? Yeah, you could bring it up again. You know, particularly if circumstances have changed and there's become more of an interest. But I think that's a really good way to deal with it that gives every trustee that opportunity to bring before the board something they wish to be included on the agenda. that gives every trustee that opportunity to bring before the board something they wish to be included on the agenda.
All right, and Andrea has just spoken to this. There should be a process in place for other trustees to have input into the agenda. And then you should receive your agenda materials in adequate time to study for board meetings. I know we touched on that a little bit, at least in regards to policy reading. How, not what your policy says, but in practice, how um how early do y'all get the agenda? Late Friday afternoon for a Monday meeting. Tuesday, okay. Do y'all feel that that's enough time?
No, and we also don't get very detailed information. I know in some districts, they'll post on their district's website, the agenda, the board packet, um PowerPoint presentations, all of that, so that the board members and the public have that before the meeting. We get just, we get the agenda, um we get a few supporting documents and not a whole lot to go on.
Okay. So this might be something that y'all might want to discuss at a at a future board meeting, right?
Yes.
Kind of hear everybody out, work with work with these different personalities and see, because, you know, back to your point about Friday, late Friday, weekend happens, if you have kids, you, even if you don't have ki- I don't have kids and I still have always stuff going on, you know, you never know what, and then if you have a full time job or you're a full time mom or you're a full time parent, whatever it may be, you may not have time. I'm I'm on a, on the board of the local soccer club here, and it infuriates me when I get something at four o'clock on a Monday and we have a meeting at six thirty. I do not have time to read that because I am working, right? So y'all might want to maybe, you know, put a pin in that and think about, uh think about talking about it. That is pretty standard, I will say, as far as practice, what we see across the state is the Friday, Friday evening for, and luckily, y'all have it until Tuesday. We sometimes see Friday before Monday, and that really isn't a lot of time. And so even if you have maybe Monday night, but you might have a standing obligation Monday night, maybe you do something with your church, whatever it is, where you just aren't gonna have the time to be able to review all of that beforehand. So that may be something that y'all want to sit down and discuss and see, how could we make this more efficient for everybody, right? And how can we respect everyone else, everyone's time? But also so that we're productive when we come to this meeting, right? So that we're not sitting here saying, I haven't had a chance to read this, and it's not because I just haven't read it, though we know sometimes that might happen, right? It's just, I don't have time, you know, and so I need more time. And in order to do our jobs, right, and to do what we've been elected to do, we want to be more thorough. So I would encourage y'all to have an open discussion about that at some point. Andrea, would you say anything else?
I agree with that, because some districts do, I mean, particularly districts who have a lot of technology, and y'all have that here, I mean, you're, you know, one of the more technologically advanced districts where they do put everything on their website, yep, sorry.
They do, they do put everything on their website so that not only the board members have access to it, but also members of the public. The law does not require that. The law simply requires the posting of an agenda um at least twenty four hours prior to the board meeting. But, you know, I I I think it's, if if time permits, I think it's a good practice to have that information available, at least the things that the public would have access to anyway if they sent a FOIA request, right? Not your executive session type items. But again, it's all, a lot of it's dictated by time, right? And and, you know, how much time Dr. Little has and how much time Tracy has and what the schedule is, a lot of it depends on that.
Well, and Andrea, I'm just gonna spend a minute playing devil's advocate. So one of the um conversations that we've had is that, um so the presentations for our board meetings are um work products of a staff member. And um it's very two dimensional when you see it as a PowerPoint. And it, the meaning and the interpretation and the understanding of the PowerPoint requires the narrative that goes along with it. And so how do we respect the work that these staff members have put into these presentations and post their work without any context, five days before they present it with their brain involved and their their voice? I mean, that's a, that's a hard.
I think that's a good point. I really, I really do. Whereas, you know, if you're live streaming meetings right now, but with COVID, you don't have, you know, so many people, that that someone who's interested can actually watch the PowerPoint and listen to the narrative of it as opposed to just the PowerPoint itself. So I think that's a good point.
Yeah, we we want to make sure that we are um respecting the the work and and the morale of our staff that puts a lot of time and effort into the these presentations. And I, you know, I think the board, um and we have recently started providing those presentations to the board prior to the meeting, so that we can marinate on it and look at it.
And no questions to ask, right?
Right, right.
The narrator might be going to answer anyway, but you'll you'll know what your questions are so that you're better prepared. And and something else that came up recently in a district that I work with was board members asking if presentations that had been given, right, at a board meeting, that the board be able to access those after the meeting, right? So that they are stored somewhere on the district website, so that a board member, maybe they missed the meeting or maybe, you know, they weren't paying as no- enough attention when something was discussed, so that they can go back and access that presentation, you know, for purposes of future board meetings.
I think a lot of it has to do really with sort of attitudinal inappropriate. And so, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with disseminating the information. I think it, I th- I I don't know if I would agree with, I get the information, say, at five thirty on Friday afternoon, I look through a PowerPoint, and then I hammer Greg with thirty seven questions at seven thirty that night, okay? That I don't think would, I wouldn't advise that. You know, I wouldn't advise reaching out to the author of the presentation, you know? Do I think it's wrong to go on and make some some notes and say, hey, make sure I ask about this or think about this, whatever it may be? I I have noticed the last couple of times that we have had that, it has led to a more thoughtful, at least in my mind, a more thoughtful look at what is being presented. And that I can sort of take some time to sort of filter it and formulate how I want, but then you have to give the author the the ability to answer your questions even before you ask them. And so I think that's where the presentation comes into as they present it, and then you can get it on your checklist. Okay, they answered that, they answered that, they answered that. Because I, no, we don't want somebody up there reading us PowerPoints. That's the most boring thing that can ever happen. What you want is the.
And we would, and we would really not tolerate teachers that just stood in front of a class and read and read the PowerPoints to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's it's it it has to, you have to provide some background, some context to it, some, you know, the history of it. That that's what makes a presentation interesting. And so I I think a lot of it's just in how we approach the information, you know?
Well, and and too, I mean, I'm, you know, I am fully aware of the fact that, you know, some of the our staff that present to us, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a career highlight that they get to present to the board, and we ought to respect the, you know, you know, give them a chance, you know, I would hate if I was a, you know, a high school student and did a incredible pro- book report project with, you know, you know, a trifold or whatever, and the teacher passed it out on a day I wasn't there. Because, you know, you, the big reveal is kind of a big part of of a work product. Um and so and I, I have enjoyed and appreciated getting the presentations in advance. But I do um want to tread carefully in um making sure that we respect the the presenter's um voice in their presentation, so that's.
Well, the other thing I would say too is if, let's say, your um assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction is going to give a presentation, right, on graduation rates or whatever it is. And so you get the presentation and you have some questions about it, don't reach out to that person, right? Never call the person, you know, the only person that you communicate with directly is the superintendent, right? So I would just say that too, that if you do get a presentation, don't pick up the phone and call the director director of curriculum and instruction with your questions.
Um and I would um, I would add or ask, because I did look at your website earlier. It looks like y'all are posting those, so are you posting them? Some of the presentations, are you posting them after the board meeting or before the board meeting on y'all's website?
Where did you see those?
There was like an agenda and then PowerPoint, like materials link.
So. Really? I'd like to see that.
So um our, our office communications handles the website. And so we do publish, if you go to the board agenda page, where you see board agenda minutes, we um first publish the straight agenda. And then when the board meeting is recorded and livestreamed, then we publish um either tonight or tomorrow morning, first thing, the finished livestream that people have been viewing online. And then we also dissect that, and we change the agenda to an interactive agenda. So then you could click only on one item on the agenda, and you wouldn't have to wade through thirty minutes to get there. You could go directly to the five minute presentation by that particular employee. So uh before a board meeting, when we were meeting in person and people were coming to the board meetings, we would put a slide up, just like you have, with a link that they could go to to see a a board packet, basically. It would have like any policies that were represented or anything like that. Um we're gonna try to try to, we're gonna have to try to do that online. We have not done that while we've been doing these live presentations in a restricted attendance. Because there, it was difficult to do that and they weren't here. We're gonna try to, we've added a column on our agendas page where we hope to be able to do a form of that. But people will have to learn to go there.
Okay, that might be what I saw then. So y'all essentially have just the full livestream and then that clickable agenda. That's great, so that you can kind of go, so you can still see the full presentation and get that actual, not just I'm looking at a PowerPoint. Good deal.
Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I know y'all want to try to get out of here around eight. So you can read through, you know, the the next few slides here, you know, you understand what all these are and you can read through these, you know what I mean? You don't really require me to stand up here and talk more about those. I really want to get into, oh, sorry. I'll do this one. Um I really want to get more into some of the nuts and bolts and the things that are common problems and legal pitfalls and so forth, so if that's okay with you, that's what we're gonna do. So. Sorry to usurp you, Molly. Okay, let's see. Okay, here we go, board meetings. Um the 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 goals of of board meetings are, they look simple, but when you think about executing them, they're not quite as simple. The first one, sticking to the agenda, that's that's a big one. And I've been dealing with a s- some situations in a couple of boards recently where there are all kinds of motions to amend the agenda, and there ends up being a forty five minute discussion about amending the agenda to move things and to add things and and so forth. And it it it's really disruptive, and I'm not saying that that won't occur from time to time, but it really, in my opinion, takes away from what the board is really there to do. And, you know, you get into some um power struggles between board members, and I think that's why some of this is going on. But you really need to have an agenda and then stick to it. If there's a reason to amend it, and we'll talk about how you do that, because you can only amend under certain circumstances, but really try to stick to that agenda and don't get, you know, don't bird walk, don't get sideways. Because again, then the public is looking at you like they can't even get their stuff together. You know, why, why is it that they're not following the agenda? I came to this meeting to hear this discussion, and now it's gonna be eleven o'clock at night before they get to that that point, okay? The second thing is giving everybody the opportunity to speak. And as the chair, Emery, that that's up to you, right? To make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to speak and that you don't have one trustee or two trustees who take all the oxygen, suck all the oxygen out of the room, right, by by talking and talking and talking. And so that's something that the chair has the right to and should control to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity. I shouldn't have put these colors on here. Providing public participation. How many people think that public participation is required? It's not, okay? There is nothing in state law that says that a school board or any other public body must have public participation. Now, having said that, I would certainly encourage boards to have public participation, at least at their regular meetings. Now, and I think you said that in the introduction to this meeting, at work sessions or special call meetings and so forth, you generally don't have that. But having public participation is important. And also putting appropriate time limits on it, and then making a decision. Some boards have actually, with public participation, they have in their policy that members who wish, I mean, that citizens who wish to speak may only speak on a matter that's on the agenda, right? And that that kind of limits the people who come in and say, well, I heard that y'all might be thinking about doing this in three years, so I want to talk about it in case you are, right? So that's something else to to look at. And then setting aside a a time, you know, I would say, I don't know if y'all do that. Do you say thirty minutes for public participation? Each speaker has three minutes? Or do you allow everybody who signs up to come and speak?
We allow everybody that signs up to speak, three minutes.
Three minutes apiece, okay, yeah. And and some boards do that, and some boards, if they're if they're having public participation last for an hour and a half, they've said we're not, you know, it's gonna be thirty minutes and however many people sign up, first come, first served kind of a thing. During this pandemic, I don't, legally, yeah, you can do that because you're not even required to have it. I wouldn't do that because that's gonna lead to lots of public outcry if you do, because people want to come and voice their opinion about face to face, virtual, hybrid, all that stuff. Making sure that you conduct legal votes, okay? And do y'all have a parliamentarian on the board? So Emery, do you do that? Do you serve as parliamentarian and as chair? Have y'all had many issues with parliamentary procedure?
Every now and then.
Ms. Hill tends to be our.
Oh, well, that's good. So you've got somebody on staff, right, who who can say, okay? Because when you're dealing with lots of amendments to a motion, you know, you're voting on those amendments, but then you've got to go back and vote on whatever the original motion was with the amendments, and I'm finding that some boards are just forgetting to do that. And then you've got members of the public who might come forward and say, oh, you never even acted on this. So it's important to have somebody who is well versed in parliamentary procedure to make sure that everything's going on is is legal, because it can really catch you up, you know, down the road. And then number five here, um I'm not a big fan of executive session. I mean, it's necessary sometimes, certainly. Because, you know, you, there are certain things that you don't want to discuss discuss in open session, because it could lead to con- concerns from an employee, concerns from a student. But executive session is um permissible for the board? It's not mandated. So the board has the authority to decide whether or not something that can be discussed in executive session under FOIA actually gets discussed there. So just because you could discuss something in executive session, maybe this is a situation where you don't have to do that. And, you know, I have found over the years that boards and and, you know, I'm not saying this about any specific board, but boards sometimes use the excuse of having their lawyer present to discuss something in executive session. And that is, that's not in keeping with the requirements of FOIA. And in fact, there was a decision in twenty, can, sorry, I'm I'm a mover too. There was a decision in twenty nineteen from a circuit court judge involving the Richland One School District, where the board had gone into executive session to discuss something, and they said, well, our lawyer was in there, and the court said that didn't matter. You know, the legal advice was not relative to a pending potential or threatened claim. So a lot of times I have boards ask me to come and speak to a policy, particularly if it's something controversial. And, you know, I've said you need to do it this way or you need to do it that way, and I can't do that in executive session. So the the legal advice that I'm giving to the board is actually done in open session. Do y'all have an executive session on your agenda for every meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So our.
Meeting on our, our agenda, it says the meeting starts at six, then we immediately vote into executive session. Um and then at seven o'clock, we vote to open in general session, reopen in general session. So we could be done in ten minutes, we could be done in fifteen, but we all kind of hang out afterwards. So from six fifteen to seven, I know um Molly had mentioned being, you know, considerate of people's times. We are losing forty five minutes of our life during, at every board meeting, where we're just wasting that time. I've tried to get executive session moved to the end of the agenda. So yes, we have executive session on every agenda for every meeting, and we do have to discuss employee recommendations, so there are, you know, new hires, terminations. But another question I have about that is, I have spoke up during executive session and said, we cannot discuss this, like this is public information that needs to be discussed publicly. Because we receive a report in executive session that just lists vacancies, new hires, and reports like that are not confidential. But then we come back out into open session, like, we. But then we come back out into open session, like we ask questions of the HR guy that's back there. Like this is the first time we've ever heard this. When in fact, we just heard it in executive session where it didn't belong anyways. How do you suggest getting the board into compliance?
Well, really, as an individual trustee, all you can do really is bring it to the board's attention to say, I think we're veering outside of what we're supposed to be doing in executive session. I know I had one district where that was a real problem with the board. So what the superintendent and board chair did was in, on the whiteboard in the room that the board used for executive session, they wrote the reasons that you can be in here, right? And so when, when they started veering, the, the superintendent would get up and say, we're in here to talk about this. We can't, and see, here, here's the other thing about that. If you go into executive session for the purpose of, let's say, discussing a hire, okay? That can be done in executive session, right? The hiring of an employee. So while you're in there, some other board member says, well, I now wanna talk about how I think this athletic director is doing a terrible job and we need to look at replacing the athletic director. You can't have that conversation in that executive session, okay? So you, you can only talk about what you went in there and what the motion said as far as discussing it, right? That's all that you, that's all that you can do. But, you know, you really, it would not, in my opinion, be appropriate for a trustee to go out to, because remember, this is an executive session. And what do you do? You take an oath to uphold the confidentiality, right? Of what's discussed in executive session. So I don't think it's appropriate for a board member to go out and say, well, you know, we're, we're, we're not complying with, with FOIA, right? I, I just don't think, I don't think that's appropriate to do that. And all trustees do it, and they say they have the right to freedom of speech. But, you know, I'm saying in terms of what your oath is. So I would continue to work internally with the board to say, look, if this ever gets out, we could have a problem. Because you'll have attorneys like Jay Bender for the South Carolina Press Association and so forth start looking at you, right? And, you know, you can argue whether it should be at the beginning or be at the end. I think most boards, well, I'd say it's probably half and half at the beginning or at, or at the end, right? So, so again, that's just something that the board has to decide. It doesn't have to be at a particular place on, on the agenda. And as far as your other point, where you finish up at six fifteen, but the regular meeting doesn't start until seven, what I have seen some boards do is to say, executive session will begin at six. We will convene an open session immediately upon the completion of what we need to discuss in executive session. And that will be no later than such and such a time, no later than seven PM. You can do that, right? That's something that you could choose to do.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. So if you finish up early, as long as you have it on your agenda...
You have to have it on the agenda that we will convene.
We will convene immediately following.
We will convene an open session immediately upon...
But our, and we have hard written into our policy that our meeting, our regular meeting starts at seven.
Well, then you would have to change the policy.
But our meeting starts at six, that's the whole problem.
Well, if you say, and I have to look at the policy, you know what I mean? If the policy says your regular meeting starts at seven, then it starts at seven.
I think actually our policy says seven thirty.
We, we amended it from seven thirty to seven.
It says seven.
This last year?
Yeah. And all of our meetings start at six, but I don't know who thinks this, but they think because we put on the agenda that open session convened at seven, that our meeting starts at seven, although it really starts at six when we open.
Right, we have to open an open session to then go into executive session.
Okay, thank you, yes. So our meetings are really starting at six anyway. Our policy says seven.
So the policy may read, open session is at seven. I mean, I'd have to look at the language of the policy, you know, to tell you. But, but yes, you could, if you wanted to change and say, we will reconvene an open session immediately upon completion of what we needed to discuss in executive session. Because, you know, the other thing about if you've got two hours, sometimes you may need a two-hour executive session, right? It just depends on what you got on the executive session agenda. But I find that the more, the longer period of time you stay in executive session, the more the public is like, what are they doing behind closed doors, right? I mean, that's just, that's just what happens. And so, you know, what I say to boards is, don't, if it's not necessary to have an executive session, don't have it. If there's nothing that needs to be discussed in executive session, just take it off the agenda for that particular meeting. And you could always, if you have a situation where something comes up between when you post the agenda and the meeting actually occurs and you need to have an executive session, if with a two-thirds vote, right? And a finding of it's an emergency, you can have the executive session. Because it would be an emergency, you know what I mean? Because it's something that this teacher was just killed in a car accident or some teacher's been arrested, you know, whatever it is. So that's just me philosophically saying, I think that some boards overuse executive session. And, and it leads to that, the public questioning what's going on, so.
Emery, would it be a, a good idea to adjourn executive session as soon as we're through? And just, I mean, there'd just be a lull time there? I mean, because what, what I'm afraid of, and I, I've never experienced it happening, but I, I guess it could, that if you get, we sit around in the boardroom, some of us, and, you know, just talk, you know, while we're waiting on, on general session. But, you know, you have to be real careful about what you say when you're just sitting there because you're still in executive session. So would it probably be a better practice if we...
And you would just wanna publicize that that's what you're going to do, you know what I mean? Because then you're gonna have some people in the public say, well, I don't ever bother to get there till seven because I know they're not going to be conducting the regular business of the meeting until seven o'clock, right? So you would need to amend your policy and then you would need to get the word out so that people understand, okay, you know, they're, they're convening an open session at six, they're going into executive session, and they are going to, you know, adjourn that when it's completed and start their meeting. So if I wanna make sure that I'm not gonna miss anything, then I get there at six, right? Or, or I look at how many items are on the executive session agenda. And I think, mm, okay, if I get there at six thirty, it's probably gonna be, it's probably gonna be okay. So that certainly, yes, is something that you could do. You would just need to amend your policy and educate your public about that.
Well, and I don't wanna beat the, a dead horse here, but, I mean, I think the reason we have structured our meetings the way we have is because with a seven o'clock start time for the meeting, that, to me, that's a courtesy to our community. They know when it's gonna start, they know when, when our meeting's gonna, you know. Earlier than that, it's very difficult for folks that have families, that work, you know. I think that gives them time to, to get here, and it's a consistent start time. And then because our agenda always follows the same format, they, they have a pretty general idea of when community participation will be and when the policy will be. And I'm just concerned that if we did a, the meeting will begin immediately after the executive session. If for some reason something comes up, a legal matter, or there, you know, the, the employee recommendation, there, there's something, you know, extenuating circumstance with that, then, I mean, my concern is, my time is not important. It's the community's time and then the time they're taking out of their evening with their families coming here that is important. And so I'd rather keep it...
Yeah, I think that's a good point, too. Again, it's just something that the board has to consider. And, and again, legally, you could do it either way. But I think it's something that y'all just have to decide what works best for you and for your community. Because as you said, that's whose time is important. And, you know, you don't wanna be having, when do y'all have public participation, too? That's another question I wanted to ask.
It's about fifteen minutes, ten to fifteen minutes into our meeting. It's, it's at the beginning, near the beginning of the agenda.
That's good, because I've seen some boards have it at the end. And then you've got kids there late at night, and that's not, you know, that's not a good situation. Okay, let's talk a little bit about FOIA. You know, FOIA has two purposes. The first one we've been talking about, which is that it requires public bodies to operate in the sunshine, right? It's called the Sunshine Law. And unless they can do certain things in executive session. The other thing that FOIA does is it allows the media and citizens to obtain copies of public records, right? So let's talk for a minute about common FOIA questions. And I'm gonna ask y'all to answer some of these. So what is a public body under FOIA for purposes of, of a school board? What is a public body? It's certainly all of you, right? What, do y'all have committees? Do y'all have board committees? Okay, if you did, whether it was a standing committee or let's say that an ad hoc committee was appointed, that committee is also considered a public body for purposes of FOIA, okay? Meaning that they have to post an agenda and post notice of their meetings and so forth. Now, I've got something interesting that's, that, a question that has come up is, what about when, does the chair, do you meet with Dr. Little? Or is it the officers to set the agenda? Just the two of y'all, okay? So some districts, you know, they have the officers meet with the superintendent. Some, some trustees are advocating that those meetings, the agenda-setting meetings, that those are to be governed by FOIA. Meaning that you would have to post notice that we were having an agenda-setting meeting and then also live-stream it, just like you would any other meeting of the board. You know, I don't, my opinion is that's not required by FOIA, but I think that's something that we may see more and more discussion about. So just, just something to, you know, think about.
What about a, a, a group that's comprised of, say, senior leadership team and a couple of board members? Say they're looking at, you know, architectural selection or say they're looking at, you know, the, who's gonna handle the next finance?
Is that committee going to report back to the full board in some way?
Uh, I would say, I would say indirectly through, through a recommendation through senior leadership team, yes.
Okay.
But the recommendation would not come through the board.
Right.
So would that, it would come to the board.
If it's filtered through the administration, okay? Then, and the administration then decides what to do with what that committee discussed and decided, right? And then the superintendent, you know, calls through that and then comes back to the board with a recommendation, which may or may not include some of what the committee has recommended to the superintendent, okay? I think if it's a situation like that, that FOIA would not require that those meetings be open to the public and that you post a notice in an agenda. If however, the committee reports directly back to the board, like the chair of that committee comes in and gives a presentation to the board, then it would be covered by FOIA. I, you know, from, from reading all the case law on this and the language of FOIA, I think that is the distinction, is to how that recommendation ultimately comes to the board.
Well, and, and our committees of that nature have posted notice and entered an exec... Because they were, they were all contract negotiations with...
Right.
And so they, they actually were...
And that's certainly the safer way.
They followed all the meeting laws and the...
Yeah, that's the safer way to do it, right? Is to just go ahead and comply, go ahead and comply with, with FOIA, certainly. Okay, so what is the definition of a meeting? I mean, that's when a what? A quorum of the, the group, right? Whether it's a committee that's subject to FOIA or the full board, they meet to what?
Discuss public business.
Discuss and/or act upon a matter that is before the board. So there's, and I've had board members ask me, like, when we go to conventions and so forth, what if four of us go to eat together, right? Or what if the full board goes to eat together? Are we violating FOIA by doing that? What's the answer to that question?
No, unless...
No, no. You just have to be careful, okay? That during that dinner or, you know, drinks or whatever it is, that you're not what? You're not talking about district business, you're talking about other things. Now, there's also public perception, right? So just because it doesn't violate FOIA, you may give the perception that that's what's happening. And particularly, I would say it's, it's more so in the informal conversations that happen at conferences as opposed to like going out to dinner. You know, I'll see, when I'm walking through and talking to people, I'll see, like a seven-member board, I'll see four of those board members over in the corner at a table having a conversation. And I'm like, ah, you know, if there was a reporter here, they're gonna say what, what's going on, right? Are you conducting business outside of what FOIA requires? So just something to be aware of, right? The perception that you might be talking about board business, right? But it doesn't violate FOIA for you, for four of you or all seven of you to go out to dinner and, and so forth, as long as you don't talk about district business. Yes, we're required to have an agenda, and how specific must it be? It must give the public notice, right? Of everything that's going to be discussed. Because the whole reason behind it is that, you know, I'll know whether or not I need to go to the school board meeting or I want to go to the school board meeting. It used to be, FOIA was worded about the notice of the meeting and it said, an agenda, comma, if any, comma. And that was fixed a number of years ago by a court where one of the Spartanburg School Districts, actually, they amended the agenda at the beginning of the meeting to add discussion and action about an item that was very controversial, about an agreement with the country club for use of the golf courts and the swimming pool and the district was gonna pay for, you know, it was very controversial. So a group of citizens who didn't know that was going to be discussed at the meeting, they sued. And that's where we got the amendments to FOIA, which talk about how you can amend the agenda. And it actually amended the law as well to say you have to have an agenda, okay? What, here's another, these next two go together. What is considered a public record for purposes of FOIA? And in particular, are, are your personal, okay? Meaning using your personal electronic devices, are your texts and emails considered to be public records? Such that what? They can be subject to disclosure under FOIA? Yes, they are, you know? If you're doing district business, it doesn't matter if it's texting, if it's Facebook use, all that is subject to disclosure under FOIA. And I'll just share my personal opinion here about something. But, you know, everybody uses social media these days. Almost everybody has a Facebook page or an Instagram page. Just be aware that anything that you're posting there could be subject to release, even if you have a private page, if you're posting about district business. So it's just something to be, it's just something to be aware of. And, you know, I caution board members on, if somebody posts something on, on Facebook and they tag you in it, right, as a board member, don't feel the need to engage in a public discussion on Facebook about it. It, it just, it creates situations. So what I have advised trustees in, in cases like that is just to put on your Facebook page where before somebody can tag you in something, whether it's a picture or a comment or whatever, they have to get your permission to do that. You know, we, we train employees on that, too, you know? That you need to put those kinds of controls on your Facebook page. What is the penalty for a FOIA violation? It's, it's actually a criminal penalty, interestingly enough. It's a crime if a public body violates FOIA, and there are fines associated with that. But recently, these were after the, the FOIA amendments on agendas, there was another amendment which says that if a district is receiving burdensome and repetitive FOIA requests, that the district can seek to have a court, and, and I wanna say with this, it is the Administrative Law Court. That this may be the only time that the Administrative Law Court gets involved is where a school district takes a member of the public into court about repetitive and burdensome FOIA request. Now, having said that, from a practical, from a practical stance, how are you gonna look as a school district if you take people into court for their FOIA request, right? I mean, you got the right to do it, but it's one of those things that just because you can, is that something that you should do? Because it would lead to, I think, you know, bad blood. But in any event, that is available now within the FOIA statute. Okay, the agenda requirements, we talked about this. The meeting notice with the agenda must be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance, can be amended up until the twenty-four-hour deadline, even if you've already posted it. Then to amend it, you must have a vote of at least two-thirds if you're going to discuss something. If you're gonna act upon something, then you have to have the two-thirds vote and a finding of an emergency circumstance. So you must have those two things. And that must be what the emergency is, the specifics must be recorded in the minutes. So courts really discourage boards from amending agendas, right? Unless it truly is an emergency, like the roof fell in at the high school, right? That, that sort of a thing. Okay, these are, and everybody knows these, it's worth looking at them, that these are the only times that a school district can discuss something in, or school board can discuss something in executive session. And I wanna point out one thing on here that I think's important. Number one, personnel or student matters? If you are talking about a general policy or practice that applies to personnel, for, for instance, a reorganization chart, right? Or instituting a salary cut for all support staff. Or, you know, something that affects the whole group of employees. Same thing with students, like changing choice policies or attendance lines, those kinds of things. Those discussions cannot take place in executive session. So you have to be, for instance, a trans, you know, your transfer policy, you'd have to talk about that in open session. Now, if it's about one... Now, if it's about one student who requested a transfer, and the student has a hardship, and it's come to you all, that can be discussed in executive session. So, it's important to make sure that when you go in there, it's for one of these reasons, and whatever you state for your reason going in, you have to stick with that. You can't say, "Well, this is, this is about a contract negotiation, so let's talk about that now." If that wasn't in the motion, you can't do it. And with personnel, and boards still do this, the motion should not be, "I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters." Okay, that's not specific enough. It needs to be to discuss matters related to the employment of personnel, or to discuss matters related to the discipline of personnel. Whatever it is that you're going to go in there for, you have to be specific. Just saying personnel matters, it does not comply with what FOIA requires. Ethics, um, and y'all all went through the ethics training, um, so let's, these are the statutes, you can read those yourself. Common, common ethics, um, questions, okay? So just to see how much of this y'all remember. What are the rules for a board member who has a family member employed in the district? You cannot do what? You can't vote on anything to do with that family member, right? You are, you are prohibited from doing that. And you must disclose, if you have a, if, if you have a conflict, whether it's a family member's employed in the district, or you are affiliated with a business that does business with the school district, you must make that conflict known in a statement that you give to the board chair, okay? That, this is specific under the ethics laws, okay? So you have to put that in writing, give it to the board chair, and then anytime that something comes up involving that conflict, you have to note at the meeting that you are recusing yourself, and why you're recusing yourself, and that needs to be in the minutes. And the recusal is not just voting on the matter, it's also what? Discussing it, okay? So just keep that in mind, and, you know, I, I think most, most boards, most trustees do a good job with recusing themselves, but noting it in the minutes, I'm not sure that's always happening, and it's required. And, you know, if you get a complaint to the Ethics Act, under the Ethics Act, to the commission, they're gonna find a violation. Now, they may not do anything to you, but they're gonna find a violation, so just keep that in mind. What are the rules when the board is invited to dinner by a vendor currently doing business with the district? Can you go?
Yes.
Yes, right. But what about if it's a prospective vendor? No, you cannot do that. So if you have an RFP out, an RFQ, a solicitation for bids, you are prohibited from accepting anything of value, which would include a dinner from that prospective vendor. As far as gifts, anything over, I tell, I tell trustees, if it's more than something nominal, meaning like, less than 10 bucks, put it on your disclosure form, okay? And that includes dinners, right? Wherever you, wherever you're taking out to dinner, you must disclose that. And a lot of trustees unfortunately don't do that. Last question-
I was recently told by, uh, Amy Franklin with the Ethics Commission, if it's under $25, don't bother.
Yeah, I would say, and that's the, that's the hard and fast rule, but I tend to say, if it's, if it's between 10, if it's more than a cup of coffee or a Subway meal, I would disclose it, you know, I just would, because people are watching sometimes to see what you're gonna do. So, again, just kinda like erring on the side of posting notice of meetings, I would err on the side of reporting things. Then let them decide what they wanna do with it, but you've, you've reported it. What about the last question on here? If my spouse is a teacher, must I recuse myself from voting on salary increases or bonuses? No, if it's an across-the-board thing? Now, as you narrow that group down, let's say your spouse is an assistant principal in the district, and there's a discussion about increases for assistant principals, I would recuse myself from that, right? Because it's a smaller, it's a smaller group. Across the board, no, but once you start narrowing, narrowing it into categories, I would recuse myself. Okay, let, let's just, I know, can we have about another 10 minutes or so? Are y'all okay with that? Potential landmines, okay? Allowing your role as a parent, or a spouse, or a grandparent to overlap with your responsibilities as a board member, okay? And you have to remember that when you leave this room, even though you're not at that point, as we talked about earlier, you don't have any authority, right, to do anything, to help anybody, other than to say, "Thank you for bringing that to my attention," if you called the superintendent, right? But, you, you still wear that trustee hat, and you're viewed as a trustee. So you just have to be careful, for instance, when you visit schools, that you're going to be, even if you're going there to have, um, lunch, you know, with your grandchild or whatever, you're still gonna be viewed as a trustee, right? So just keep that in mind, and don't make it appear that you're there as to kinda spy on what's going on. It's, it's just important to maintain these two roles as separately as you can. Number two on here, um, voting, I mean, visiting schools without following proper protocol? You know, you should have a policy that talks about board members visiting schools, and how that is to be done. And it's very important that you follow that protocol. Because if you, if you don't, depending on what you're doing when you, when you go there, remember, you don't have any authority as an individual trustee, it could even be a situation where the, you know, the district, the superintendent could say you're trespassing, or you're causing a disturbance, right? So it's just very important to comply with that policy. Failing to maintain the confidentiality of matters discussed during executive session, we talked about that earlier. There is no penalty in South Carolina for someone violating the confidentiality of, um, executive session. There's no fine, there's no, you know, the, the most that really can happen, and this is not just with that, but any kind of board member misconduct, that generally is up to the board itself to police that, right? Which can be a private reprimand or censure. It can be a discussion, right, with a board member, and then it can go up to a private censure, and then potentially a public censure. There is a statute which allows a school board to remove a member for cause, that's on the books. It's been utilized extremely rarely. The most recent time that it was utilized was, um, in Lexington 5, and this was all in the news with Kim Murphy, some of you may remember some of that from a number of years ago. But she was not removed for cause as far as being a disruption to the board, or doing anything against board policy. She was removed because she didn't live, you know, there, Richland and Lexington County. She was removed because she didn't live in the county from which she'd been elected, right? But, for, for a board member, because I have board members all the time say, "This one board member's driving us crazy, can't we just remove them?" It, it doesn't work like that, so, keep that in mind. Number four is very important, failing to accept the vote of the board majority. You all take an oath, and it's in the School Board Association's, um, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, that you say your piece at a board meeting, you argue your position, you vote your conscience, but then when the board votes, you accept the will of the board majority, and that becomes your decision. And I think that's, and, you know, what, what I would suggest, because I have board members say, "But my constituents elected me not to, you know, ha- have that position," is to say to a person who questions you, "You know, I, I discussed it with the board when we had debate, I spoke up, I voted against it, but now the board has voted to do it, or not to do it, whatever it is. So now, it's, it's my job, and I intend to support the vote of the board." That's what you're supposed to do as a board member. Let's, um, we talked about social media use, um, we, we talked about coming to board meetings unprepared, giving orders to employees other than the superintendent, um, board members acting individually, lack of regular communication between the board and superintendent. It depends on the board and the superintendent, but when I have superintendents, like new superintendents, ask me, "What, what do you think I should do as far as communication with the board?" I think it's helpful for a, um, for a superintendent, either weekly or bi-weekly, to send an email out to board members, just saying, "Okay, here's what's going on in the district, good and bad, or things that you might wanna be thinking about, we might be discussing this at the next meeting," right? So that there's that open line of communication. Now, having said that, let me warn you of something that kinda goes along with that. So if your superintendent does that, or something like that, sends it to all trustees, what you don't wanna do as trustees is start responding, and then you start having a conversation, right, about the email that you receive? Because if you do that, what? It's a meeting, it becomes a meeting, right? So just keep, just keep that in mind. If you're gonna reply, don't reply to all, you know, just reply to the superintendent. And probably the most important one on here is playing gotcha at board meetings. And that works both ways, you know? And you talked about this earlier, as far as there being trust and support the board of the superintendent and the superintendent of the board. It doesn't make anybody look good if you get into a board meeting, and you've got a trustee who's like, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna get this superintendent now for this." Or, you know, "I'm gonna get it, the assistant superintendent for whatever, because I'm gonna ask this question." And same thing with the superintendent, to come in and spring something on the board when you have no idea that's, that's coming before you. And that's why it's so important to have communication as necessary between board meetings, right? So that you avoid those gotcha, those gotcha moments. One other thing, and I'm almost done, because, yeah, see, look, questions. One other thing I'll say about that too, is, um, and I don't know if this is a problem in this district, but I've had superintendents say to me, "I've got seven different board members, and four of them are always asking me to gather information, right, about something or another, and provide me with information about it." Do I have to respond, right? And so what I say to superintendents is that, well, if you get an email asking those questions and you don't respond, that's not the thing to do, right? Just ignore it, that, don't do that. But, if it is going to take the administration, if they get a request for data going back three years on teacher retention within the district, or at a specific school, and the reasons that teachers gave for leaving, and it's gonna take staff six hours to compile all that data to get it to the board member, that the superintendent certainly can say to that trustee, "Look, um, you know, I, I know you wanna get this information, and I, I, if I could get it to you quickly, I would, but I'm gonna have to pull somebody off of other things that they're doing and spend six hours." So then the board member, what the superintendent would say to the board member, is bring that up at the next board meeting, and if a majority of the board wishes to have that information, then it'll be supplied to all the board members, not just to the one. And the other thing that I've said is, if it's something that's quickly, like if a board member asks for something, and you can get it in a minute, or an hour, or whatever, so the superintendent goes on and gets it, send it to all. Even though one asked for it, send it to all, so that everybody has the same information.
Yes, yes.
So I'm sorry I went over, but it was only about 10 minutes.
I have a question.
Sure.
We skipped over slide 10.
Okay.
But you have, that the superintendent recommends employment of certified and support staff. Will you speak more to the board ratifying, um, the superintendent's recommendation for support staff?
Yes, let me ask you, how, how do you do that? What does your policy say? Does the superintendent have the authority to hire and fire all non-certified people? Okay, um, and most districts have done that, they've given the superintendent the authority to do that. There is a state law, okay, on the books, that says that "No person shall be employed nor any purchase made except in a duly, um, a duly authorized or, or lawfully gathered meeting of the board." It's an old statute, back from like the 60s, okay? So because of that statute, the advice that all school lawyers have consistently given to boards over the years is that those support staff hires need to be ratified by the board. Otherwise, you're not in compliance with the statute, okay? So, it really depends on the guidance that the board has given to the superintendent. Do, do y'all expect the superintendent, every time a support staff person is hired, to call a board meeting to ratify that? I mean, then you'd be having meetings all the time. Or do you do it once a month, or once a quarter? There's nothing in the law that says that it has to be within a specific timeframe? You know, you'd certainly wanna do it within a reasonable, a reasonable time. But that's, that's how that works generally. I don't know if you had something more specific than that?
No, I was, we were discussing a policy, um, we're in the middle of revising that policy.
Okay.
And I was under the impression that we had to ratify support staff somewhere along the way.
Yeah, you do, you do need to ratify. But again, that can be a whole list to say, "Okay, over the last 60 days, we, you know, I've hired all these people, and then the board votes to ratify the hiring of those individuals, and the reason for that is that state statute, because it is still on the books." And someone could raise that issue. And actually, I've had that statute work in a good way, um, where a board hired someone, okay? Well, they gave the superintendent the authority to issue contracts over the summer months, right? And then the board would then vote on them. Well, the superintendent issued a contract to this person, and, um, the person went ahead and signed the contract, right? And it said, stated on there, it was subject to, you know, ratification by the board of trustees. And after that was signed, the board found out that this person had done some really bad things in another state. And so the person, the person who had the contract tried to argue that, "Well, I've got an executed contract that y'all have to honor," and we pointed to the statute and said, "Oh, no, no, you know, you're, you're not, technically, you're not employed until such time as it has been ratified by the board."
Thank you.
Do you have anything about the support staff situation like that? In another district where a job also, there was no contract, but it, sorry, a job offer had been relayed, and it was, it was recommended to the board at a meeting. Well, just due to time constraints, they had not run sled background checks on everybody before that board meeting. And one of the individuals came back with a rap sheet. And, and unfortunately, what they were charged with was a felony. It was 30 years ago, but it was a felony, and their board policy said they could not hire anyone who had been convicted of a felony. Um, and so what they did was at the next board meeting, said, "We, we are recommending that we rescind that recommendation for hire for that support staff position due to the conviction." And it didn't matter what the circumstances were around the conviction, but it was somebody who had pled guilty. So there was also an admission of guilt. And so they handled it that way. But that was a support staff person, where they were like, "Oh, gosh, we've already actually technically recommended it, but they had yet to ratify it." So, you can always kind of come back and say, "But we've now found this out, we can't do this."
Well, thank you for having us. Are there any other questions?
Anybody have any other questions for Andrea or Molly?
I mean, I got lots of questions, I could go on all night, but I know it's time to go.
All right, well, thank y'all very much, this was extremely informative.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Dr. Little, do you have any remarks before we adjourn?
No, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Stand up and leave.